Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight. We are here for another one of our public meetings to discuss the sports park and the design that's going to go into it. And we want the public's input as we've asked before. And we want to make sure we designed this to meet the community's needs. You know, we've had, I think, two or three previous, three previous public meetings on the sports park. And, you know, the overwhelming request was for multi-use fields, baseball fields, so that we can meet the community needs. You know, the community made it clear we didn't want a sports park that's for travel ball and things like that because we need it for the community and for the children here in this community. So with that, I want to go ahead and introduce Looson Associates. And we went through RFQ process, so to look for qualifications from qualified design firms. And part of our goal and our commissioner's goals was to get a firm that specialized in sports parks, parks and recreation. We didn't want to look for a firm that necessarily builds bridges and that they can do a sports park. We wanted sports park people, parks and recs people. Looson Associates has designed over 600 parks and recreation facilities across the country. I encourage you to go to their website and check it out. They have great images, pictures, there are galleries of previous sports parks that they completed. So we're very happy to have them teamed up with us on this. Tonight with us, we have Whit Alexander and John Sexton. And they've put a presentation together and some other things. They'll probably be asking some questions, but I think afterwards we'll have some, some time for you to come up and talk independently with them if you'd like to. So you may want to hold some of your questions for that. I don't think there's anything else that I'm missing, but with that, I'll go ahead and let Whit take it away. I know there's not many of us here tonight, but we're going to use the microphone because we're streaming this meeting and we want people to be able to hear what we're talking about. So with that, Whit?
Okay. Take it away, sir.
All right. Very good. Thanks. Appreciate it. And what we're going to do, let me see if I can, there we go. Okay. That's working. It doesn't change on this screen for some reason, but it's changing up there. Yeah, the arrows there. There you go. Okay. We're going to go through a process here where I'm going to let you know a little bit about our firm. Like Rick was saying, we're Looson Associates. We're a firm that's landscape architecture, oops. You pulled the cord out there. We're landscape architects, civil engineers, architects. We design pretty much just parks and recreation projects. There are some other things we do occasionally, but like Rick's saying, that's, that's our on-the-side stuff. Our main focus is park and rec work. And over the years, we've done quite a bit of this stuff, like he was saying, over 600 of these types of projects. But we're going to give you an overview of the property here in a second. I'm going to show y'all where this is. Some people, folks were asking earlier exactly where is the site? If not everybody's familiar with where the property is, we'll, we'll show you that and give you a little bit of the condition, the things we've seen out there on the property already, so y'all, y'all are more familiar with it. And then we're going to show you the proposed facilities. Those were the facilities, like Rick was saying, they came out of the previous public meetings. These were not just facilities that were sort of pulled out of a hat. These were priority facilities that the citizens of the county have already told county staff they really want, they're, they're high demand. And then what we're going to ask y'all to do is, that's going to be our presentation, folks that are here, we're going to ask everybody to vote and help us prioritize what that is. We've got a list of some facilities. There's also writing candidates available, of course, also. But we're going to go through that process with you guys. We'll, we'll break y'all up into those smaller groups here in a little bit. So go ahead there, John, if you would. First off, before I, before I jump into this too much further, I always like to do this kind of a, kind of a thing. How many folks here are tonight, are in support of the things like Rick was saying, the youth sports complex? How many folks here think that would be a good idea to put out here at the park? Okay. Okay. You may have other things that are your favorites, but you know, just in general, is that something y'all would support? Okay. What about the idea of maybe just some passive things like walking trails? Places to go out in the evening, just walk, get a little passive exercise? Is that something?
Bicycle.
Bicycle. Okay. All right. And then what about, like he was talking about, playgrounds for kids, pavilions, picnic shelters? You know, the good old classic park and rec kind of stuff that people think of? Is that something?
Yeah.
Okay. And then how many folks here, I see some, some names on some shirts. We talked a little bit earlier about your interests there. So how many folks here are here to support something else, let's say? Okay. All right. Good, good, good crowd. All right. So as I mentioned, we've got 600 of these, some odd projects we've done. There's a quick sampling there on the screen. You see some of the sports complexes we've done around the, around the country. John? We've worked in our two offices out of Nashville and Atlanta. I'm out of our Atlanta office. John's out of our Nashville office. And from those offices, we cover anywhere from pretty much Texas up to North Carolina, from Kansas, back down to Florida. Down here in this area, we're working on several projects right now. We've got in, we call it in the coastal area, Daphne, Alabama. We're about to start a big sports complex project for those guys. We've been helping Gulf Shores, Alabama with some renovations and a rec center and a pool complex and some more ball fields. And we're hoping to try to pick up some more work in Escambia County, probably, hopefully next week. So we're down here quite a bit working. Dothan, Alabama, we've done a lot of work for those guys over the years. We're about to do a 12-field ball complex for those guys. It's about to go into construction. So we're down in this area working quite a bit, doing these kinds of projects for, for your neighbors, too. So, okay. And besides, you know, being an architect, I'm a landscape architect and I'm one of the owners of the company. John's a landscape architect. And we come to work every day and we draw parks pretty much every day. But when we're not working doing these kinds of projects, we're also out fostering park and recreation understanding in the community, whether that's at a, at the local level, doing meetings like this. Sometimes we're in Washington DC as an, as an advocate, sometimes as a lobbyist to try to get Washington to help fund parks-related projects back in our states and our home states, but it helps everybody. And then even internationally, I've been to China a couple of times and spoken on parks as they're trying to get, they're just wading into what is park and recreation and how could they improve what parks are over there? So, so we do this stuff quite a bit, even outside of our business model. We're advocating for parks quite a bit. Okay? The site, there were some questions about where that is. There's Highway 98. It's a triangular piece of property. Does anybody know where the new school is going? Have y'all heard about the new school that's going on 98? It's behind the new school. The piece of property that's cleared, it's already cleared back behind, back behind the school. And 331 comes in, you see, I don't have a laser pointer, but you see the highway coming in right there off to the left. That's 331 coming in. So it's not too much, you know, if you were to go out here, go down, turn left, go just a few miles, it'll be on the left. It's, it's in this general neighborhood where we are tonight. A few things about the property, we've been out there today looking over, we're having it surveyed right now, is there is a golf power line easement that's, it's sort of a triangular piece of property there, if you would. It's about 34 acres, which is pretty big. I mean, that's, that's good enough to do a lot of different things out there. You know, there's a wetland in the corner, which we have to avoid and we're going to miss that. We're not going to mess with that and it's, it's going to stay like it is. There's a really nice, large oak tree out there, a big live oak tree that's in the far point of the triangle there. That's, good thing is, it's off to the side. We can miss it. We can maybe use it, maybe, you know, incorporate a trail around it or something like that, make it nice. So that'll stay. But the, you know, good thing is, the property's already cleared for us. And with the future school site coming in that fronts the highway, they're going to pay for the road that comes in for us. That's already been taken care of. We already know where our highway access is going to come in. That's all being partnered with the school system. And we know that, you know, parking that we develop can be shared with the school a little bit. Maybe some of our overflow needs, if we have a really big event at the park, we've also got parking that's going to happen at the school, too. And we can, we can share a little bit there to save, overall save some costs when we develop things. Okay? So I'm going to give you a few ideas here. I know everybody knows what a baseball field looks like, what a soccer field looks like, the things that were identified in the previous meetings. But I'm going to show you some of the ways we tackle these and some of the new ideas that we bring in from other places we work. Every time we come to a new client, we try to bring these sets of ideas to help improve and create, hopefully, the best project we can. So with baseball and softball fields, skip if you would if there, John, to the next slide there. And multiple clusters, you know, if we're scoring out of a second floor, you've seen baseball complexes that are like a cloverleaf, right? There's four perfect fields arranged around in a circle. And there's a center score tower where people go upstairs and they score. We can do those things. But what we also like to do is incorporate green space and mini-part features back into the middle of our baseball complexes. And if you come there all day to play and your child plays at nine o'clock and their next game's not until one o'clock and then they're, if they're lucky and they've moved up, you know, and they, they play at five o'clock, you're there all day. So inside the park itself, inside the baseball complex itself, inside the wheel, we'll do picnic areas and shade and mini-playgrounds and things like that. So when you walk in the gate at the fence at the ball complex and you're there all day, there's other things for you to do and keep you entertained. If you've got little brother or big brother playing on one ball field, little brother can go over and play on the playground and mom can keep an eye on both without having to go back outside the complex. So we try to do that. All right, John? Netting's important. You know, we're going to put a lot of net to protect areas where families are going to congregate, little kids are going to congregate. For our backstops, we're probably going to be looking at the net-type backstops as opposed to chain link, just strictly because of wind loads we have to deal with and all those things. Plus, they're nicer. You can see better. You can, you can see through the fence a little bit better. And we can, we can make those things happen. For multipurpose fields, we've been charged with, you know, a certain number of ball fields that need to fit on the site. And then the goal has been, hey, let's get as many more rectangular multipurpose fields as we possibly can. These aren't dedicated to just football or just soccer. You know, lacrosse, where we are, is, is becoming the big thing. And all of the high schools are getting into playing lacrosse. Y'all are probably starting to see some pressure for that, too. We're going to try to cluster a group of multipurpose fields together where they can share one large piece of turf. The idea being, we, we try to light it from the perimeter with, we put the sports light poles all the way around one really big piece of turf that can be striped off into little peewee fields or big fields. And if the grass starts to wear out over time because of heavy use around a goal, you can flip the field and go a different direction with it. We're going to try to do those things when we do, when we do your fields. You know, there's the option eventually for artificial turf. That's not necessarily going to be in the budget that we look at right now, but we will think about that a little bit when we're engineering, doing the underground engineering on this stuff, is that eventually, if y'all ever need to convert one of the grass fields to an artificial turf field, you'll have some of the infrastructure in place already. We're not going to go through that expense with this, with this budget because those things are pretty costly. Just so y'all know, a single football field, like you're seeing that cluster of six fields there, that upper-left corner field is an artificial turf field. And that one extra field was, you know, $700,000 add over the cost of grass. So, you know, that can, that can eat up a budget pretty quick if you, if you have other needs that you need to develop when you're building the park. So we're going to do, one of the things that came out of the, out of the last meetings was a pavilion playground area. And this is, you know, usually a passive area. It's a little bit of open lawn, unstructured play. Maybe there's a picnic shelter there, maybe restroom, a playground of, of hopefully enough size to really attract people to come in and bring their kids to use it. And we can do different types of surfaces when we do the playgrounds. You know, the old wood chips are sort of, you know, not everybody's favorite type of surface. They have to be replenished every so often. We can do the poured-in-place rubber, but that gets pretty hot, especially here. I imagine it's going to be a pretty hot thing to do. That's why you see a lot of times we're doing shade, a lot of shade sales over the tops of playgrounds these days to try to cool down that surface and keep those playgrounds cool. All right, John? You know, playgrounds can, can take on different sizes, shapes, different structures. We try to put structures for five-year-olds and under. And we try to do structures for five-year-olds and older, separate, apart from each other, so that moms with little kids don't have to worry about the, little kids running in the way and getting tackled by the older kids being rambunctious, those kinds of things. Try to separate that stuff out. Try to keep shaded areas for parents to sit nearby and let their kids play. Give the, give the kids a little bit of free rein. We try to protect these playgrounds, keep them in areas away from traffic. Maybe if they, if they have to be somewhat near traffic, we're fencing, putting in walls, things like that, so kids can't just take off. And try to incorporate some safety measures like that. If the budget allows, we try to go this way, too. Besides just playground equipment, you know, kids like to go and they swing and they slob. I've got two. I've got a, a 12-year-old and a six-year-old. And they'll get bored with that kind of stuff quicker sometimes than we want them to. We want them to burn as much energy, but sometimes they get bored with the, the same playground structure each time they go. It's the same slide every time they go. So interactive features like a water course where kids can play and get their feet wet, get their hands wet, things like that, educational aspects, natural aspects that are incorporated back into the playground design, just make them more interesting, make them more fun. When we talked about concessions and pavilions, we talked to staff about a variety of sizes on these things. These are some really big ones that we've done that seat up to 200 people for really big events. They have catering kitchens where you can come in and bring, you know, a warm dinner and serve it out of the windows inside these things. They can get pretty big and they're, they're a good rental opportunity for the county. But we also do a lot of smaller ones and we'll probably have more of this smaller side of things. Although we'll likely have one that's medium-sized to accommodate a, you know, a fairly large group. But then a lot of first-come, first-served, smaller shelters that are arranged around the park for people who just want to, you know, just on the spur of a moment, come out and have a picnic dinner. So when we do our concessions and restroom buildings and all of our other buildings, skip if you would to the next one there, John. There you go. The materials we have to build these things out of have to really be durable because when, when a county builds a park, the capital investment is usually about a 20 to 25-year investment. They don't come back and rebuild and replenish and repaint and, and those things that often. So the materials on these things have to be, you know, a lot, a lot of cases block. We try to make it as attractive as we can. We do roof lines that have different flair to them, those kinds of things, to give them some style. But they have to be, you know, almost, almost like school-type buildings. They have to be as durable as a school is built, just to last that, that 25-year investment. Okay? There's some other styles on how those things can look. When we have the money available, we try to go a little bit beyond. This was in Waycross, Georgia, on the bottom right corner that you see there. The one that you see in the gray, the black and white, is a building we're about to start in Dothan. Those are always, we'll probably pick up some of the local character. We try to incorporate maybe some historical elements that are important to each local community back into the design of the buildings, so that it's not just strictly the same cookie-cutter building everywhere. We'll probably be looking at, at some of the things. We'll be talking to staff about what influences they might want to have in the architectural style of, of the projects we do. You know, sometimes if it's a county project, they like to capture the same look of the old county courthouse, so that when you come to the park, you know it's a county facility. It's not just any old park, it's a county park. And so we'll talk to staff about branding the park. Okay? And trails was something that was mentioned, with, like we said, walking trails. We have some wooded areas around the perimeters here. We'll try to take advantage of a little bit of that for shade. You know, if there's wet areas, we're going to avoid the wetlands. But if there's drainage areas, we'll build boardwalks and things of that nature to help, to help the natural flow of the water across the site, make it a little bit more interesting. When we do our parking and roads in our parks, we try to, we try to get everybody into centralized parking lots that feed multiple complexes, so that the shared parking, you don't have to duplicate the same parking spot. There's been some talk, because of the school site, that our parking lot could help serve as an overflow to the school when the park's not in use and vice versa. So we may be looking at doing something like that. And then one thing we've got to do, and this is going to be sort of the back-of-the-house kind of a thing, that in order to keep a park like this in good shape, they're going to have a maintenance facility out here. And this is the sort of thing we just have to do. It's, it's not a, you know, it's nothing to write home about in terms of looks and those kinds of things, but it's a functional garage where staff can really maintain the park out of this, of the same site and be there on a regular basis to cut the grass and keep it looking good. Okay? So that's what we've been told in terms of the facilities that have been previously discussed. I know, like we said, there's some folks here that are here for some other things. The exercise we want to do is to help prioritize the facilities that have been identified so far. Now, that's not to say that we can't talk about something else. What we want to do is, though, I'm going to stand here at this station. John's going to go over there for my office. He's going to stand at that station. There's comment cards that we're going to have out there for, and I know some folks have already been filling those out and that's good. Please leave those with us because my memory's not that great. The best way I'm going to know what y'all have to say is to write this stuff down so we can take it home. The county will have a record of it. But we're also going to give everybody, John, we're going to give everybody some stickers. The whole reason for these boards up here is everybody's going to get a set of stickers. We want y'all to go vote. And y'all may not, y'all may be here for something else, but we can talk about that in terms of your comment cards, but what we want folks to do is to take their stickers. And if you're really interested in walking trails, that's your number-one thing. You don't care about the other stuff. Walking trails are your thing. You can use as many of your vote dots as you want on that. Or if you're not, you know, you're a little bit in favor of walking trails, but also baseball and you don't give a hoot about rectangle fields, then you might split your votes accordingly. And this is all about a prioritization process.
Couple of questions.
Right. But we're, we're going to do that and we'll be break up into the groups here just a little bit.
We did a vote in the prior meeting. I just want to know if you had that information already?
Well, that was the priority of the, that's where the prioritization came from.
Because there were items that were, I know they had a three on that, but it was a skate park. When we did a vote, we didn't hear from you.
Do y'all want to address that? I mean, our understanding about skate-
I wonder if you got that information?
We did. And our understanding about skate park is it's already identified in the county for a location for that, which is not at this site. It's at another's park site.
I'm just wondering if you got the information from all the meetings that we had prior to this.
Yeah, there's, there's a demand for it and there's people that are wanting it, but it's not at, the county's plan is not to place it at this property. It's to go at the other park site.
So it's more centered that you're not doing skate park there? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what we've been told, that it's identified for another park that, that's more central to the county, that would serve more folks from around the whole county. Being at this end of the county would serve, you know, would be more difficult for people to get to.
Are there any other sports that have already been written off like that?
No, we, no. No, we, we were, we were told in terms of the facilities that folks have asked for, and these were the ones we were told with the, the top priorities, except for yours necessarily, but yours is not necessarily identified for this site.
I'm just stating for myself. That was a, yeah.
Okay. Right. Right.
And I think, I still think that was a poor system. Go ahead. I don't want to do that.
Okay.
I think there was some information that you probably didn't have come from this meeting. I'll be right back.
Okay. We can talk about it. Sure. Yeah. Yeah, sure.
We've got a couple of things also to, now, you know, we're streaming this meeting and we're going to make a website live on Friday that has everything you can imagine sports-wise on it that was mentioned in previous meetings. You can go on there and vote and put your comments on that and we're going to take all that information into consideration as well. As far as specifically just a skate park, part of our Helen McCall master plan calls for a skate park. There's room there designated for a skate park. So knowing what our budget is right here with this is about $6.3 million after the purchase of the property and the building of the road, it's not necessarily in the plans for this new sports park, but we do have a place for it at Helen McCall Park. So, you know, I don't want the meeting to get bogged down with one detail where you can make your, you know, we have the information from previous. We provided that to the designers. They know it. But the overwhelming need that we've seen out here is baseball and multi-use fields. And I understand that and you're, you're welcome to disagree with it, but we do encourage anybody that's watching online and yourself to go on our website and, and put your, your vote in there as well. But I hope that covers that.
As a resident citizen, somebody who's an African, it seems very good.
Well, I think that being decided is because it's in a, it's in our master plan for Helen McCall Park. So, you know, to say that we want it on one end as opposed to being centralized, you know, as long as there's a skate park, I think it would meet your needs. Now, whether or not it meets the needs for this park, that's to be determined, but if it's already in a master plan, that's where we think we see fit. But, you know, it's really going to be up to the public to decide. Yes, ma'am?
Can you repeat the points of your point, as many multipurpose fields as possible? And the use for the different sports? Do you have any idea of how many can have that purpose for, what we go to call it?
Not, no, not necessarily. The vote will kind of help us prioritize, say, for instance, what this is all about a master plan for. Let me go through, I forgot to kind of go through that step. This is to get to a, a master plan that, that identifies what ought to go on the whole property. Okay? Maybe we identify, who knows, four or five, whatever, six, multipurpose, maybe something like that. Four baseball, maybe a mile of trail. I'm just, and we haven't even put pen to paper yet on that at all. So the idea is to show development plan for the entire property. Now, that entire development may be more than the 6.3 they've got to spend. So what we need y'all's help on, the whole point of y'all's voting here and all of that, is if all of a sudden it says that multipurpose is the super-high demand over maybe a second shelter, maybe two more, maybe another mile of trail, maybe, maybe trails drop way down to the bottom of the priority list. They're still on the drawn plan of where we're going to put them, but maybe in this first phase, they don't get built. Maybe y'all's priority is to build one more extra multipurpose field or light one more extra multipurpose field, whatever it takes to, to hit that top priority. When y'all go out there on the ribbon-cutting, hopefully in a couple of years, when we, we have the ribbon cut out there, you won't, when we, that, that site plan up there, you're going to see a master plan that's going to have a lot of stuff drawn up. But when you go to the ribbon cut, not everything's going to be built yet. There'll be a home for it, just like the skate park has, has got a home at Helen McCall, but it hasn't been built yet there. There may be stuff on this site that y'all see through this planning process. Maybe we help identify five multipurpose fields, let's say. But maybe they can only afford to build three now. But then there's a, there's a back empty spot back there. Then in a few years, another funding cycle comes through, they finish out two more. And we need y'all to help us, you know, where, shift the money. Which way does the money shift tonight? Does it shift heavily towards baseball? Does it shift heavily towards multipurpose? Or that kind of thing? Right. Right. Yeah. When we say multipurpose, I mean, y'all be, y'all be sure I've got a picture of soccer up here, but that means anything that can happen on a rectangle field. That's soccer, lacrosse, or football. Or ultimate frisbee or whatever. That's right. Right. Okay?
You know, also one of the, the aspects of the way you guys will want to design the rectangle field is if we want to have some sort of concert event out there or-
Yeah.
big county gathering, we have an opportunity to do it over this large lit section, and I think what we're saying is that we're not confined to, okay, here's a football field here and a soccer field here, we have a large area that we can design any way we want to, and, and we can change it on the fly with paint and chalk and things like that.
Folks, folks do festivals out there, you know, we see, we see some of these places where they'll have a big, you know, Boy Scout jamboree on the multi-multi fields that they've got going. When they, when they don't lock themselves into a crown football field, and a crown football field, and a crown football field in a row with those ditches in between, then it frees up so much more flexibility at the space, you know, like a, you know, a room like this, imagine if this was cubicles instead of one big giant room. When we have one big giant room in the, in the park for ball, it can be used in a variety of ways for different sports that require different sizes of fields and styles of play and all of that, so. Yeah. Yeah. Right. We take the whole rectangle, the big, imagine, imagine this big old tabletop here was six soccer fields all in one big, and we take the whole tabletop and we tilt the whole thing draining from one side to the other. So you've got the drainage that you need, so that the grass doesn't wear out quickly and all of those things, but we, we tilt the whole thing from one end to the other, uh, so that you don't have the, the mud holes in between fields when you get the crowning, uh, crowning going on. Oh, crowning? Yeah, um, good old football standards that people have seen forever, uh, a football field has a ridge in the middle, and it's lower on the sides, if you were to run down the middle of the field from one goal to the other, there would be a slight ridge that you would run on, and the water would drain off to both sides. And old football coaches used to like that, because when you would do the student body left or student body right, you're running downhill and you're picking up speed and those kinds of things, so, but soccer is played on a, it's preferred on it as flat of a site as possible, with no crowned field. So in order to make these fields work for multiple sports, we design it, and football can be played on the uncrowned field, but soccer is typically not preferred on a crowned field, because if you're dribbling the ball, soccer ball, close to the sideline, and you're trying to control it, and the field is draining off that direction, the ball will dri, will tend to track out of bounds and go out of bounds, so we try to avoid that for soccer. Yeah, yeah, okay? Yes, sir?
We're pretty late to the game, my name is Colin Terrill, and I'm the ambassador for the U.S. Pickleball Association for the Panhandle.
Yeah.
I love everything you're saying for youth sports and that, but the number-one sports for seniors in America now is turning into be pickleball.
Right.
It's played on a hard court, you can put two on the size of a pickle, of a tennis court, and just in Walton County this past year, we had four hundred inquiries for people wanting to play that had no place to play.
Yeah.
So I'd love to get that back in the process if, if at all possible.
Okay. Have y'all discussed that?
We have discussed it, um.
Yeah.
We are currently working, um, on some of our parks that we have existing to put pickleball courts on them, and it's in the planning process right now. I don't think it's been determined exactly.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, Driftwood Park, and, and we, we know that there's a need there, um, just like there is with, with Skate Park, and what we do is we, you know, we listen to our parks and rec people and what the need is in the community. We have these public hearings and see what our greatest need is, and try to find out where we can place that in the best place within the county, centralized on one end, on the, on the east end, on the west end, depending on where the need is. So, pickleball's something that we've definitely heard of, that's been picking up steam, and I know the Commissioner Meadows is working to identify where we can put those, and that may be Driftwood Park, it may be Legion Park, it may be Helen McCall, it may be any of those parks, but, uh, it is something that we're aware of, and we're working to, to find the right location for it, and to meet everybody's needs at the goal. You know, we know that there's need for, for youth and children, but there's also needs for senior citizens and, and, and the middle-aged folks as well. So we wanna hit all those, those demographics, those categories, but at the same time, we wanna make sure that we design it to, uh, meet the biggest needs possible, so, um, pickleball's definitely something that we're aware of, and we're trying to, trying to find where we can put more of those.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. And, you know, that's something to consider, you know, part, part of our public meetings in the past was overwhelmingly, they did not want any sort of tournament, tournament facility, they didn't wanna lease out, we don't have the hotel space for it, um, you know, the lodging space and things of that nature, so, uh, it's definitely something to consider, and, you know, we try to take all these, these ideas and these wants and these needs and find out what we can fit in the budget, because you all know we, you know, we have budget constraints, especially with this sports park, so, trying to figure out what we can put in there and use, make the best use, which is what we rely on these guys, who just take that triangle and say, we can fix that, fit X, Y, and Z in here and, and maximize our space and the usage of it, so, um, you know, pickleball, skate park, there's been some other things that have been mentioned, too. We, we're taking all those things into account, we have to weigh in on the need of each community and where they're located, but all these things have either been planned or, or in the works right now to, to roll out and get some of these pickleball courts and skate parks planned and things of that, that nature, so it's definitely a need that we're aware of. Yes, ma'am?
Right. That's right. What we'll wind up doing for storage for equipment, like, like, uh, line, line chalking, you know, equipment, things like that, maybe cones, if it's for, uh, multipurpose-type sports, things like that, if it's, uh, if there's, if the county were developing a big football program and they need a place for shoulder pads to be stored, you know, during the, during the offseason, we're gonna have that happen at each one of the complexes, there's actually, we talked about it earlier in our last meeting, a storage building that's away from our concession. What we try to do with that is, the concession restroom building, in order to make it kind of nicer, it's, it's a certain price point of cost per square foot, whereas your storage building, you know, it, it doesn't need to be that same price point, it doesn't need to be that same, um, ornate style as the rest of the building. So, we typically build that as a separate standalone building, we say back-of-house, it's always kind of the place where, like, you know, you throw stuff and you don't look, you need, just don't look, 'cause it may be a little messy. We try to keep that away from the main center area where everybody's gonna congregate, but it's still close enough where you can use it, be, be convenient, and we'll have that at each one of the complexes. And then a larger, the bigger maintenance compound that we talked about on that, too, they'll have dry storage materials there, they'll have a, a sand pit, and maybe a dirt pit, and maybe a, you know, a place for lime storage. They'll have, have all those kinda things out there, too, for their bigger field maintenance needs. All right. Very good, well, I'm sure some of y'all probably wanna talk to us more directly, one-on-one, so we're gonna do that. Uh, John, you've got the stickers to pass out, everybody takes them, to take their votes, we've got plenty, so, if you wanna give out, you know, two per kinda thing, and y'all should use those, if you would, and...
And, and we just wanna, again, thank everybody for, for coming out and your input, please go online as well, that, that'll be live on Friday at our, at our website, which is www.co.walton FL.us, put your input in there. I, sometimes I speak fast, I, www.co.walton FL.us, and you can go to Google and put in Walton County. Um, I don't think that we have it on a card, but if you get with me afterwards and give me your information, I'll email you a link to the, to the website, but we encourage your, your participation, 'cause it's gotta be a community, a community thought process here, you know? Um, but we appreciate y'all coming out, and please give your input to our designers, 'cause they're, they're the one that's gonna make this thing work the best.
What y'all are gonna see also, uh, you know, we're doing this tonight, the next step for us is to take y'all's ideas. We're gonna go back to the drawing board, we're gonna work out a few rough ideas, different options, that we're gonna work out with staff. They're gonna, we're gonna get some feedback from staff about which way, which arrangement works best, and then eventually, y'all are gonna see another presentation of a preliminary plan, it's not the final plan. They'll, it'll still be, you know, opportunity to move things around if we get input, but before it goes into construction, there's gonna be another review for the public to see what's being planned. So just be aware, you know, pay attention to the county websites for that, notifications will be put out as to when that happens, likely in a few weeks, maybe a month from now, somewhere, somewhere around that timeframe, so, okay, all right. Well, we're, we haven't drawn anything yet, and we've got to draw the first plans, the, the, the picture, you know, where we arrange things. Once everybody's pretty well pleased with that, we have to look at how much that's gonna cost, and we'll do our estimating on how much that's gonna cost from our experience in these kinds of projects. We'll help the county say, okay, this is the first phase, you know, later things get built, maybe, maybe down the road, and then we have to go engineer it, we do the architectural drawings, the engineering drawings, all of that, the, the technical stuff that the bidders have to bid from, the contract documents. Our goal would be to have this thing probably under construction sometime early in the year of two thousand sixteen, and it's gonna take about ten months to build something of this scale, maybe even twelve months. So probably early seventeen is when y'all would start to see something out here for a ribbon-cutting, uh, that's probably the right timeframe. Right, that's right. All right, well, thanks a lot, and if, if you don't wanna stay around and talk to us, I feel free to go on home, but we're gonna stay here for a little while, and come up to us and talk one-on-one if you like, so, all right, thanks a lot.